We can sit or stand next to each other, what do you think? Or we can stand and... No. Okay. But I'm gonna start speaking. I'll be seated. Okay, so start seated and then when we get to board members, you guys will come in. It's a little... Welcome, everybody. If you could please come closer and take a seat. We're about to start the meeting.
We still got some prime seats up front. You didn't have to scout for these.
There are seats in the front if anyone is so confident. Hi. Okay, everyone come in close. Well, first of all, I want to say good evening and welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education Regular Board Meeting. I would like to thank all of you for attending our meeting and the launch of the first ever Community Pledge. It's incredible to see the support from our school community, from our principals, our staff, PTA, school site council, ASB, Norman Aid, students, and our city partners, including our city commissioners, Rotary Club, and Chamber of Commerce. I would like to call the session to order and invite PTA Council co-presidents Lorraine Eastman and Maria Bennett to lead us in the flag salute.
Everyone's standing already, okay. So since you're all standing, let's start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
The motion was made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Next, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from our student board member Alex Boden. Next, we have on our Community Spotlight. Next, we have our Community Spotlight. It has been my goal to build a stronger school community. Last May, I launched the Community Spotlight during our Board of Education meetings to highlight individuals and groups and create an opportunity to share our stories with each other, appreciate our differences, and recognize ourselves in one another as a way to bring our community together. It is appropriate that today we include here the approval of our mission, vision, and core values and our very first BHUSD Community Pledge. May I have a motion for the approval of the BHUSD Mission, Vision, and Core Values?
Mr. and President, I'll make a motion for the approval of our Mission, Vision, and Core Values.
The motion was made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Dr. Stern. This summer, the Board of Education was hard... I'm sorry, first we had to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Alex Boden. This summer, the Board of Education was hard at work and this administration preparing the new school year and for the future of BHUSD. We've made many positive changes to the organization that will set us up for success in the coming year. For the first time, the Board of Education and the Cabinet met for what will now be annual planning sessions. In addition to focusing on the strategic plans, board policies, and the governance handbook, we revisited the Mission, Vision, and Core Values. We presented this at our August 9th Board of Education meeting for the community feedback, and tonight we would like to vote to approve the Mission, Vision, and Core Values. It all started with the question, how can we deliver educational excellence? When it is not in our mission, vision, or part of our vernacular. And so I present again our revised Mission Statement. We've distilled this down to just two words, educational excellence. The Mission Statement defines the objective of our school district. Everything we do as an organization points to this, our mission, educational excellence. Next, we have our vision. The vision is where we as an organization aspire to be. Our goal was to fine-tune our vision statement, and this is how it now reads. Our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world. Next, our core values are the guideposts that we rely on to achieve our mission and vision. Our core values are excellence, integrity, wellness, inclusion, safety, and community. This has become the basis of all of our conversations and planning for the future of BHUSD. I would like to now turn it over to my board members so that they may comment on our Mission, Vision, and Core Values before we take a vote. Alex Boden?
I think our new Mission and Vision Statement really encapsulates everything that this district works towards and everything that our students are capable of achieving, and I think that is perfect for the goals we hope to accomplish in the coming years.
Thank you.
I have always been a believer in less is more, and I think that by changing this so that we can just spread it out without looking it up is one of the things that I am most proud of, and I think it encapsulates exactly what we want from our kids. So without further ado, I hope that this year we will be able to provide getting these ready, the kids ready with integrity in this complex, changing world, and I didn't have to look that up.
Staying on the theme of saying less is more, I won't repeat what my colleague has already shared. I am really proud of this. My goal in my colleagues, having been lucky enough that they appointed me to be here for a year, I really wanted to focus on things like strategic plan and re-looking at our mission and our core values and all this stuff. And so first, I want to say thank you to my board members for being open to all of this. And second, I really wanted to thank Dr. Bregge also for his leadership in helping us reach this point, and I really hope the community likes it, and I really hope that this helps set a new tone for our school district and all the work that we do together going forward. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Gabe. I am very happy to see everyone here because part of our core values is inclusion, and that means all of you and more because we have a lot of amazing people in our community, old and young, and I'm just really happy that we put our minds together, and although they're just written words, they are very meaningful, and once we all get to know them and familiarize ourself, I really feel like it could lead us in an even better place. Thank you.
If less is more, I shouldn't really say anything at this point, but I do want to say that the sessions that the board worked together on revising the Mission and Vision Statement is some of the best time we've worked together since this quintet has been formed. So I do appreciate all of our perseverance and demeanor as we went through this process together. Hopefully, that will help set the tone of excellence at our level. Thank you.
Just a quick thank you to everybody that is here today and for spending a little bit of time for us at the beginning of the meeting. It was just a pleasure to be part of some authentic work with our cabinet and with our school board, and that's been a long time since that has happened. So I'm very pleased that this is our kickoff for the new school year. It was at our opening day, and we look forward to continuing with this work.
Thank you. I was gonna call for a roll call vote, but as I sit here, I realize that I already called for the vote. So in my anticipation, we've already voted on this item. So I'm gonna move on to our next item, which is the BHUSD Community Pledge. So may I have a motion for the BHUSD Community Pledge? May I have a second? The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Student Board Member Alex Boden. As we begin this school year, it is essential that we come together as a community. I believe that we all want a school community that supports the expectations that we set for our students and for each other. The Community Pledge acknowledges our commitment to act with integrity and respect towards each other and within our school community. We recognize that as a community, we create the environment that supports educational excellence. Next, I'd like to hear from my board members. I know that we've already heard from them, but I'd like to hear from them about our Community Pledge. And I too would like to say I am so proud of our board and our superintendent and our cabinet and how strong our relationship has become and how well we're working together. We had a great summer, and I think that we've had very productive results that have come out of all of our meetings this summer. So I'd like to pass it on to Alex Boden.
The board's decision to have this Community Pledge is incredible because our Mission and Vision Statement is not just the board's decision and what the board envisions the district to be like, it's all of you, our students, our faculty, our community leaders, everyone, and the fact that all of you get to participate in making this official is very important, and thank you so much to everyone who is here tonight.
One of the words in our values is the word inclusive, and I want you to know that this is something that is for the whole community. It is inclusive for everybody, not just the people who are signing here tonight and standing, but it's something that we should carry forward and continue to expect that we will get this in the community, in the school, everywhere. So this is for everyone, not just the school. It's for everyone, and I hope everybody understands, and I thank you all for being here and signing tonight. Thank you.
One of the things that I'm very proud of this board for is realizing that it really, a lot of the tone setting starts with us. And so as we did work this summer, kind of thinking about our mission, our vision, our values, one of those values is community, and we really can't do this without everybody. And so it starts, you know, it's cliche to say it's top-down, but it really does start with the board, it starts with the administration. But then I see a lot of our very esteemed administration here, our faculty, our student leaders, our community members. It really takes all of us. And so one word that's not reflected up there, but I think stands out in my mind is also really accountability. It's a few spoiled apples in our community that don't have the better of the entire community in mind can spoil things. And what I would like to say with everyone here is that once we sign this Community Pledge, we need to root out some of that. We need to hold each other accountable and do things the right way. We can disagree, we should disagree, it is healthy to disagree, but we need to be able to have conversations the right way. Two people can want great things for our community and have different paths on how to get there, and that's a good thing. We should kick those around, we should talk about those, we should put those out front, but we gotta do them the right way. We gotta do them with integrity, gotta communicate with each other using kind words. These are the kind of things we say to our kids, but we have to be able to do the same. We pledge that we will do that as a board, we do that with our administration, but we really expect for that to happen everywhere, and I invite the community to hold the board accountable. I'm only on the board for another four months, I will be doing it, sitting in those seats very soon. So I expect everyone in our community to do that, and we will do the same. We have to do that for each other going forward. Thanks.
I very much like a lot of what you said. I think that when we say "I pledge," what we're saying is "I am committed to" and "I am accountable for." And I think that when we get caught up in our day-to-day lives, we forget that we are also accountable for showing our best behavior and being civil. And when we do disagree or we are very upset with one another, there are ways that are more productive, that are honorable and respect, that all of us are entitled to certain opinions. So by saying "I pledge," and anyone who is pledging, they are committing to upholding not only educational excellence, but also to act with integrity and civility. Thank you.
Thank you. This has certainly been a first in my years here, and I'm thrilled it's come to be. I look at it and I think nobody can say that we are going to not reach excellence by not following that, right? That makes sense. Let that sink in. So we know there's gonna be a lot of people who don't sign on to this immediately, either literally or physically, but it has a lot of words that echo and should sink in to our community, and if we all follow that, we probably will be where we want to be. So it's a kind of a simple formula. That, and I also want to let everybody know that these step and repeats are gonna be for auction later on because Michael's probably gonna make new badges for us or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. This is very unique. If you think about, if you have been in other school districts, this is a very unique initiative and one that I'm proud to be part of. I would like to say that this is something that I think is, this type of behavior is assumed, and we would hope that everybody would have this approach, but it always doesn't happen. So I'm proud that we are in a unique position to do something like this as a school district to memorialize our words. You know, when you sign something like this, mean what you say and say what you mean, and this says it all. So proud to be part of this work.
Thank you, Michael. First, I'm going to take a roll call vote, and then after that, I will ask Dr. Stern to read the Community Pledge, and I'd ask you to all join her. As she reads it, you can read along over here and over here. And then following that, we invite you all to go to the tables to sign your name to the Community Pledge. And this really is the launch of the Community Pledge, this is the start of it. This week at Back to School Night, we'll have the Community Pledge there as well so that this can continue on to our parents and the students and others in the community. We encourage you to use the pledge, to start your meetings with the pledge, to remind each other of the pledge. When it seems like things are getting out of hand, it's, we now have a tool that we can remind each other that we as a community are behind this pledge, and these are the expectations that we have of each other. And I really, really hopeful that this is going to help us stay on the positive track that we are starting this year. It's so exciting, we have such great energy for this school year, it's really fantastic, you can feel it. I mean, look around, look at everybody that's here, we have every representative, and I just am, I'm just so optimistic about this year. So first, I'd like to call for a roll call vote. Alex Boden, Mrs. Marcus, Mr. Halimi, Dr. Stern, Mr. Margot, and I myself am a yes. The motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Alex Boden. Congratulations to everybody, and I'd now like to invite Dr. Stern to come up and read the Community Pledge, and please join along with her.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. I am honored to read our newly adopted Beverly Hills Unified School District Community Pledge. Is everyone ready? The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive. Thank you.
Okay, I invite you all to come up now to the different tables and sign the pledge. I also encourage you to please come up and take pictures of yourselves with the pledge and to post it on your social media because we really want to spread the word about the launch of our Community Pledge. Thank you all for being here. I also want to thank the audio production group for providing our entertainment and for KBEV. We just couldn't do it without our students and for all of you for coming out tonight. After this, we're gonna continue the meeting, we're gonna go inside to continue the rest of our meeting. Thank you.
That was great. Good job, guys. This is live. Thank you.
Thank you.
In like five minutes, I'm gonna bring everyone in, so I might need a mic.
Nice job, Andy. Thank you. And I think that when we get caught up in our day-to-day lives, we forget that we are also accountable for showing our best behavior and being civil. And when we do disagree or we are very upset with one another, there are ways that are more productive, that are honorable and respect, that all of us are entitled to certain opinions. So by saying "I pledge," and anyone who is pledging, they are committing to upholding not only educational excellence, but also to act with integrity and civility. Thank you.
Thank you. This has certainly been a first in my years here, and I'm thrilled it's come to be. I look at it and I think, nobody can say that we are going to not reach excellence by not following that, right? If that makes sense, let that sink in. So we know there's gonna be a lot of people who don't sign on to this immediately, either literally or physically, but it has a lot of words that echo and should sink in to our community. And if we all follow that, we probably will be where we wanna be. So it's a kind of a simple formula. That, and I also wanna let everybody know that these step and repeats are gonna be for auction later on, because Michael's probably gonna make new badges for us or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. This is very unique. If you think about, if you have been in other school districts, this is a very unique initiative and one that I'm proud to be part of. I would like to say that this is something that I think is, this type of behavior is assumed, and we would hope that everybody would have this approach. But it always doesn't happen. So I'm proud that we are in a unique position to do something like this as a school district to memorialize our words. You know, when you sign something like this, mean what you say and say what you mean. And this says it all. So proud to be part of this work.
Thank you, Michael. First, I'm going to take a roll call vote, and then after that, I will ask Dr. Stern to read the community pledge, and I'd ask you to all join her. As she reads it, you can read along over here and over here. And then following that, we invite you all to go to the tables to sign your name to the community pledge. And this really is the launch of the community pledge. This is the start of it. This week at back-to-school night, we'll have the community pledge there as well, so that this can continue on to our parents and the students and others in the community. We encourage you to use the pledge, to start your meetings with the pledge, to remind each other of the pledge. When it seems like things are getting out of hand, it's, we now have a tool that we can remind each other that we, as a community, are behind this pledge. And these are the expectations that we have of each other. And I really, really hopeful that this is going to help us stay on the positive track that we are starting this year. It's so exciting. We have such great energy for this school year. It's really fantastic. You can feel it. I mean, look around, look at everybody that's here. We have every representative, and I just, I'm just so optimistic about this year. So first, I'd like to call for a roll call vote. Alex Bowden, Mrs. Marcus, Mr. Halimi, Dr. Stern, Mr. Margot, and I myself am a yes. The motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Alex Bowden. Congratulations to everybody. And I'd now like to invite Dr. Stern to come up and read the community pledge, and please join along with her.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. I am honored to read our newly adopted Beverly Hills Unified School District Community Pledge. Is everyone ready? The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive. Thank you.
Okay, I invite you all to come up now to the different tables and sign the pledge. I also encourage you to please come up and take pictures of yourselves with the pledge and to post it on your social media, because we really wanna spread the word about the launch of our community pledge. Thank you all for being here. I also wanna thank the audio production group for providing our entertainment and for KBEV. We just couldn't do it without our students and for all of you for coming out tonight. After this, we're gonna continue the meeting. We're gonna go inside to continue the rest of our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Giant stand.
Board of Education, regular board meeting. We are at item number nine, Report of Closed Session Action. Dr. Bregge, do you have a report from closed session?
President Wells, there was no action in closed session today.
Thank you. Next, we have consent calendar. May I have a motion for approval?
I would like to move the consent calendar minus 10M and 10N.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Mr. Halimi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0 with a preferential vote from Alex Boden.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment number one agreement with Waldron and Associates.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Mr. Halimi. Any discussion?
I'd like Rafael to come up, if that's okay. I, so, my understanding is these are services that were performed for the appraisal related to the MTA litigation, and there was a do not exceed of $110,000 on the contract. And so now, and feel free to stop me if I'm missing anything, my understanding was that this item was for the overage of approximately $26,457 related to those services above the $110,000 cap. Is that correct?
Yes, well, what, with this, what happened was there was some older invoice amounts. So there's two invoices that the district was charged, one of them was an older invoice, and then this one. So in order for us to be able to pay the totality of all the invoices, we had to increase this amount in order for us to be able to get this item paid.
Okay, so, I understand that. I understand that these were services that were, that were actually performed. All of that makes sense to me. What I don't understand is that we negotiated a do not exceed of $110,000. So, and I believe we do that to make sure that, you know, we, we, we put a cap on what we believe the value to us is, and we set a do not exceed, so we don't have to pay more than $110,000 for the kind of services that we're getting. So, what happened here? Is it that they came to us and they said, hey, we're going over $110,000? Is it okay? Did they get approval before they went over $110,000? Why shouldn't we just stick to the terms of the original contract and just cap what we pay them at $110,000?
So, I think that what happened was with the first invoice, some of those amounts weren't necessarily calculated into the not exceed. If you look at the second, there's two invoices. One of them was for, the second invoice was about $97,000. That one did not exceed the $110,000 that was approved, and I think that what happened was unfortunately, in the calculation of the not to exceed, the first invoice, some of those amounts weren't included in that encumbrance, and so then, that's what ended up happening. But if you look at the second invoice, which is what I think was the attempt here, you would see that that one did not exceed the $110,000, in fact, it was less. So I think that that's where there was a little bit of confusion. Unfortunately, that first invoice was not included in the, from what I could see in the calculation for the not to exceed.
But shouldn't that have calculation been done by the vendor of the service? Like, like, why are we now paying more than $110,000? Like, irrespective of that, I get it, it's a problem with invoice, or, why would we pay over $110,000 for services when we cap the amount that we're gonna pay at $110,000? Like, why is this overage falling on us? Instead of it being a, I, I get if it's a loss for the vendor, like, I don't, I don't like doing business that way, but, we negotiated for a cap of $110,000.
Yeah.
So why are we being asked to pay the full amount above $110,000?
And, so, it, it seems to me that the previous, so the, the second invoice for the 97 was in, within that range of the 110. I believe that what happened was that the previous invoice was not included when we were looking at this calculation, and so, when, when this came to us, the 110,000 was what we were looking at, and when the invoices were coming in, the, we were tracking that, but I think that there was this other invoice out there that was lingering, that was not paid at the time, so we had to include that into this 110,000 authorization. So, that's, that's essentially what happened. So, the, the, the 110 now is, is being exceeded by about 20,000, so we'd have to, but that, when you look at the previous invoice, it, it wasn't, it wasn't in that calculation.
But what, why, why is it over 20,000 over the 110? That, that's the part that I'm not understanding, like, we negotiated to only pay 110. I get that, you know, two plus two equals four, like, like, I get it, I get that the services were performed. The gap for me is that we negotiated to only pay 110, why, like, why are we being asked to pay more than 110?
Can I interrupt your second? One second. You're, you're telling me, and this is what I was, of course, I did question this, the $97,000 was what the original, was less than 110, right?
Yes.
Now you're finding in an invoice that's 26 or 7,000, that doesn't, and so, between the two of them, it comes to almost $110,000. Why that the 26,000, or was it $26,000 more? Why are the over $110,000 then?
Yes.
Can I also add in? Because I think some of this actually happened during the transition of you coming on and Wade coming off, and I recall when he brought this not to exceed to the board for 110. At that point, we were just awaiting trial, and so, I think I questioned, why are we approving a not to exceed of 110, since that would just be his time as a witness on the trial, and we'd only estimated it a couple days? And I think at that time Wade had expressed that there was an outstanding invoice out there that was also to be included in this not to exceed number. So I, I don't know if Wade had the invoice at the time, or if he had an estimate for that invoice, but I know his intent was that this not to exceed was to cover an outstanding balance, plus the time for Mike Waldron during the trial. And I think, you know, whether he knew that amount upfront, and then the, then 97 was more or less than what they anticipated, I think the question that you're really asking is, if they were going to go over and we had a not to exceed, did they come and say, we think we're gonna go over and let you know, versus just going over and then after the fact, we need to have to pay it because they had done the work? So I think that's where the control is, is when we have a not to exceed, certainly there may be instances where they need to go over, but, part of that control is that when they get close to that number is to, to let you know, and for you to give that approval, for them to exceed that amount, and I guess that's really the question you're asking. And it may not, you know, because you, in fairness to you, you were in the switchover for that, so, I don't know that you may have that answer.
I can go back and just look at the notes, some of this was during transitioning, but what I can say is, you know, I could definitely go back and look at it, but we, we will make sure to ensure that we, when we look at these not to exceed amounts, that we get preauthorization prior to looking at incurring any additional costs, but I will go back and look and see if there was a conversation about that.
One, one other thing I was gonna suggest, I mean, I don't know what the outcome, but again, that word negotiation came in today, and I think that if there's any way to negotiate this amount, ahead, if there is something to negotiate it, it might be something you could look into.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think, obviously, it's the, the total amount, but I can, I can just tell you after being in the courtroom for five weeks, that it went, the trial went on much longer than anticipated, and so, I know that Mr. Waldron was, his testimony was pushed back several times, and he had to remain available to us. So, I'm not saying that that's worth $26,000, but I do know that that was, you know, an extended period of time, just awaiting for his testimony.
Again, have, so, having been a litigator at one short stint in my life, I, I can definitely appreciate how things continue, so, I'm not doubting the services were performed, but I think what my, my point that I'm getting at here is, as a matter of principle and precedent, in terms of how we do business going forward, what I would like to see is that when we have a do not exceed that we've negotiated for, that we stick to that do not exceed, unless someone comes to us and tells us, like, hey, I need to go over, here's what's going on, and then we have a conversation about it. Like, just to get a bill like this, after the fact, when we had negotiated a fixed fee for services, that's now 25,000 or 35,000, whatever it is, thousand dollars that comes out of our general fund that doesn't go to the students, right? And, and, and I'd have an issue with that. So, we, I, I think I'd like to suggest that maybe we table this item, we get more information about what happened here, and we can, and we can bring it back if necessary at a, at a future board meeting, unless Rafael has, you know, a real issue with that, or Dr. Bregge does.
I mean, I, I've had a, a chance to get to know Mr. Waldron very well, over the last five weeks, so, I don't think that it would hurt to make a telephone call and to have a conversation about, you know, the actual contract, the not to exceed, and just get his perspective, I, it wouldn't hurt to do that, and I'd be glad to, you know, have Mr. Guzman just join us and, you know, and try to negotiate, you know, a better, a better rate for, you know, where we are now, like, we can spend some time looking at the invoices and having a conversation with them.
So will I make a motion to table that particular item, or do we, and wait? And so I'll make a motion to table the approval of a number one agreement with Waldron and Associates.
I'll second.
Did you second the first motion? I think you didn't. Mr. Halimi?
Mr., I will second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0 and a preferential vote from Alex Boden.
To be clear, the motion that passed was to, to table the item, not to approve.
Yes, the motion was passed to table.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize to declare unusable equipment surplus property.
I'll second.
I just wanna make a statement about this. I went through that list, and I saw the tremendous number of instruments and items that are being pulled, and I hope that we are able in some way not to just dump them, but to be able to get some kind of remuneration or some kind of money for them, because it, to me, that seemed like an awful lot of equipment, that, and musical instruments, and I know how much musical instruments have cost, and I know that they are not usable, but, there's always a few people out there in certain communities that know how to fix them and so on, and I think, I just wanted to share that, we're not, I think every effort should be made to make sure that we get some payment for them, sell them in some way.
Can I add to that? I was thinking, short of payment, I mean, I'd also be very happy to, you know, donate them to a community that could use them or service them.
And make use of them, so I, I was feeling that as well. I mean, kids can be pretty hard on instruments, I know, but, they, they might be salvageable, some of them, and there were a great deal of them.
I, I know the cost of instruments, and they're very expensive, and I just think that, I know that they've declared that they're not usable.
Right, right.
But, kids can do many things with instruments, as you know, they're very creative.
Dustin, would you like to come up? Thank you.
And that's the exact process, and thank you both for highlighting that, is, first we have to deem them that they're surplus, and that we want to remove them, because we spent public funds on them, and that first goal is, our purchasing and our business department will take that list now, and actually reach out to our vendors for them to be able to purchase or buy back some of those instruments, and then from there, those that are left, that's where we'll deem whether or not there is a donation opportunity for us to do so, or, you know, some of them, we will have to throw away though, unfortunately, just because we consolidated the four K8s, and we finally, after all these years, finally been able to get through that list. So I think Katina Valens, Bill Bradbury, all the people that did all this long work to be able to catalog and, I, you know, itemize these items, so, thank you to them. But, yep, thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. If there's not, no further discussion, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0 with a preferential vote from Alex Boden. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent report.
Thank you, and good evening again. And Ms. Baden, if you could help me out there?
Eli would always drag that up, and I see Alex has been dragging it down.
See, we're seeing that early.
Her down dragger.
Her own flavor.
There we go.
Mandy, read the pledge, please.
So, just a short update for you, it, it's always one of my favorite to give, and that's just some pictures, you know, pictures tell a story, and, and as you know, and it's been described already today, that we've had just such a great welcome back to the school year, and I know that Ms. Baden will also kinda jump in with her accolades for opening day, but it really does take everyone coming together, from our association leadership to our building administration, school board, all of our staff, to pull together, and we just had such a great opening day and welcome back. Here's some pictures from our opening day, which I know was a little bit longer than in the past, but we had an opportunity to do something very unique, and that is to recognize more of our employees. We did a poll last year, and we had staff that reached out overwhelmingly, and said, you know, we'd love to have more opportunities above and beyond the Apple Awards to get recognized, so, we provided that opportunity, and we're just very excited to have that experience, to be able to, you know, share more recognition with our well-deserving staff. So just some pictures here of the first day at the high Um, so just some pictures here of uh, the first day at the high school and um, getting to know um, students that were attending for their first day. But then also um, it's it's always fun to see siblings of um, kids and families that have uh, been here for um, just generations. And so so a fun day at the high school, some additional pictures, high school. And at our middle school, uh, this is some pictures from the first day with all of our students attending. And then also last Friday, um, uh, BVMS puts on one heck of a carnival. Um, and so had the opportunity to attend uh, with many board members and uh, some very excited students. Um, you know, I never had a carnival like this at uh, my middle school uh, for uh, opening week. Uh, but uh, BVMS certainly knows how to put on a show and celebration. And um, uh, after speaking to the administration, they said that, you know, they believe that just about every single student attended. Um, and that the only thing missing here is that I had the opportunity to go on the zipper with our president of our board, uh, which was uh, really fun.
Uh, so was that you bravely sliding down the moon bounce?
So it is, yeah.
He's a thrill seeker.
Yeah, yeah, it's the adrenaline rush. But you can see the zipper there in the in the that center picture. Oh, and we're also, let's see, is it, no, it's not there. I thought we had a better shot.
We killed it.
Yeah, we did, yeah. It was like uh, being in a board meeting. Lots of uh, thrown back and forth and some G-force.
Yeah, a lot of momentum.
It was just, it was just a lot shorter. Um, so and then uh, being at Hawthorne for not only opening day, but also the day before opening day is uh, their pancake breakfast. And so um, that's a great opportunity to meet a lot of new families. Um, that was on Sunday morning and we did dual duty there by going from Hawthorne to um, Horace Mann. So here's some pictures of both opening day um, at each of our elementary schools, but also at the pancake breakfast, which was uh, the day before where kids were getting their class schedules. And also the same thing at uh, Horace Mann. And a lot of first day pictures, just inside out, being in classrooms. Um, and that's really a a personal goal, is mine as superintendent, is to um, spend time in our classrooms. Um, you know, just uh, being part of the learning culture and the environment, something that's uh, been missing due to a lot of uh, responsibilities uh, in the past uh, that that I finally have an opportunity to be able to do that this year. So I'm looking forward to actually being in our classrooms and observing teaching and learning that's happening all over the school district. Um, I wanna kind of just end with uh, something that that I talk about um, often. But um, you know, I want to really highlight uh, the relationship that we have with our police department. Um, you know, they've really reached out to us um, under uh, Mr. Mead's leadership. Uh, those, that trust has actually strengthened. Um, and we're really trying to emulate a lot of the things that are happening in our school district with the police department. And um, uh, Mr. Mead has so much to do with um, the relationship building that we've had. Um, this is a meeting where the chief of police and uh, several of his uh, lead police officers met with um, our school administration. So our principals, um, some people from the district office. Um, because it's really important that the police know who we are. Um, just like it is important that we know as many police officers as possible. Um, we had an opportunity to spend some time with Chief Stainbrook and have some conversation about, you know, what does safe schools, what does an excellent school district do with safe schools and security? Um, we had, we're able to have that conversation. Uh, we were able to interact with police officers. Um, we have this uh, great new opportunity with a second SRO um, that will split their time between the middle school and also our two elementary schools. Um, and uh, that has been lacking, we've not had that. Um, and so we're excited to be able to have this opportunity to have more SROs that are available in our schools. And we also had an opportunity to spend some time in their uh, watch center, uh, which is very similar to what we're doing in our command center. And I think the most important thing that I want to share is that with Mr. Mead's leadership is that there's a focus on doing more things um, the same with the same systems since we are the same city and the schools are within the city boundaries. Um, and that makes things, you know, you've heard the expression before um, that you wanna um, you know, think smarter. Um, you know, this is one of those ways is as we are looking at our systems to integrate our technology um, uh, to what the s- what the city is doing, only improves and strengthens our overall program. When we're speaking the same language, we have the same types of resources. So um, what Mr. Mead has done in just such a short time, um, in just, you know, a month, month and a half um, uh, is incredible. And uh, he's he's able to lead this area. And um, this is one relationship that is uh, with the police department that is um, one that uh, you know, we hold very, very much in high regard. I'm just gonna end with, sorry, I'm gonna end with a little downer, just that um, I just want you to uh, to be aware. We've we've sent out the uh, COVID compliance, uh, the procedures that um, that that we are following in LA County, uh, that we are required to follow. Um, you know, we are 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 um, very systematic in the way that we are handling this. We're we're trying to keep this um, off of the plates of our administrators. But there are areas that we have to comply with um, and and we need to comply with and we are doing that. And um, uh, we've got good systems in place um, so that uh, we got some additional help. Um, you know, we're not out of the woods yet. Um, but uh, we've, we're we're really streamlining our procedures so that um, you know, we're we're able to, you know, uphold our policies and procedures to what the county is asking, but in a way that is the least disruptive to the teaching and learning environment that's happening in all of our schools. Um, and uh, and and we've been able to do that. And I wanna really thank our staff for that because um, you know, it's it's a lot of changes. It's been a lot of changes, but with the um, with our s- with our staff behind us, following the procedures, helping guide us um, and improve the procedures, um, you know, we're really in a good place. Um, and our staff uh, does not even, you know, unfortunately, they don't need to be trained. They know what to do and they're really good at it. And we're trying to do this in a way that's the least impactful uh, to to our students and our staff and uh, and stay healthy, because that's the goal, is to keep everyone in class, students and staff um, till we get through this thing. So I'm really thankful that the board has uh, supported our efforts uh, in uh, streamlining these procedures so that we can uh, really keep our schools uh, as close to normal as possible. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bregy.
Sure.
Um, Alex, do you wanna start with board comments for Dr. Bregy? Any comments?
Just thank you for your report and I love seeing all the photos from all the events. And um, on the first day of school, I saw Dr. Bregy and Ms. Tarkins walk by when I was studying and it was very fun.
They're everywhere.
Well, it's funny, well, and I actually was actually studying because I sat down next to her because I didn't believe her. So I actually sat down next to her, she had her computer out and she was really studying.
Wow.
So it was impressive.
I'm so happy that you're having time in the at the difference schools. It's a great goal and we support it a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I I have to tell you that the orientations were wonderful. Uh, the, I particularly tried to make everything that I could. I'd like to comment on how well organized uh, the uh, Sunday events were for the introducing the kids and the parents and the pancake breakfast and then coming over to Hawthorne and seeing everybody so excited about back to school. It was, it really made me feel good that we were back in full swing and that was really a wonderful feeling. And of course, uh, the orientation for the teachers on the Friday morning, I thought it was probably that all the years that I've been here, and that's quite a few, uh, was probably one of the best that I ever saw. I, from the keynote speaker to the recognition of the teachers, I was so impressed by everything that took place that morning and I really, uh, it was wonderful. I I'd like to make just a brief comment. Okay, thank you. I did turn it on.
Yes, you did.
Um, I saw two of my colleagues up there doing the uh, for COVID and they are, I just love those two ladies, uh, Marion Harvey and Sherry Kaminsky. I I I can't tell you how much I have loved working with them during my years at Hawthorne. They were marvelous teachers and the kids that had them were so lucky. And to see them now acting again in the community and in the school makes me feel so good that we're utilizing them because they're so marvelous. So I'm grateful that they're there and I'm jealous that I can't do it too because I think that I would love something like that. But you you couldn't have two better people. I mean, I, the others are, yeah, I don't know as well, but I do know those two ladies and I know them well. And um, one other comment. Uh, at the ori- at the uh, carnival that day, the line for that zipper or whatever you call it was so long. Uh, that was, I said to the kids, you're wasting your whole time waiting in the line. There's other things here. And one of the things that I loved that they had there was the American Ninja Warrior activity. That I know, I I I wouldn't be, I would not, I would hurt myself. And I I've learned that I I would, if I were younger, yes, I would have. You can bet your bottom dollar, I would have, but not today. And I I I was I was thinking to myself, some of those kids may be on the television set someday with American Ninja Warrior. I loved that activity because it was so physical and it and it and it and it was a real challenge. It's not a challenge to get on a ride, but that was a challenge to get there and do the, get the wall, get the wall. And I love that. So to all you kids that were at that party that day, that or carnival, if you didn't get the chance to try that, you missed the boat because I think that was a terrific activity. And again, Dr. Bregy, thank you for all the pictures and for being there and being so up and ready to start the school year. I think we're ready, you're ready, it's gonna be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll keep my comments really brief because I think Mrs. Marcus did a great job of encapsulating all of them. Uh, I thought the 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 Friday morning with the with the PTA, the awards to the uh, you know, teachers, the kickoff, like I had, you know, in all the years of being close to the school district, I'd never been there before. I'd heard about it and it was really infectious. Like you could, you could feel the energy in the room. And uh, clearly that's been carried forward through the launch of school and it doesn't just happen. So congratulations to you, thank you for all your hard work, your cabinet.
Thank you.
Uh, the uh, you know, the administration, the PTAs, like it it really takes a community and uh, clearly that everyone's rolling up their sleeves and uh, it it shows. Um, on the last part, with uh, the COVID preparedness, uh, you know, thank you for being ahead of the ball, thank you for doing what we need to do. Uh, I find it regrettable that that's what we need to do at this point. Uh, I will, you know, the the LA County Department of Public Health, from my perspective, I think is very much overreaching with some of the things that they're requiring this school district to do. That topic is for a different day. But again, just thank you for being prepared for what we need to do uh, per their order. Thanks.
Yes, I very much enjoyed your report and I marvel over how much work I know that you and your cabinet and a lot of teachers did over the summer, especially this summer. A lot of intense things came up and I just can't, I just marvel at how fresh, though, you was the spirit at the kickoff event at Saban. If you, one would not know that you guys slaved away all summer, but it doesn't go un- underappreciated, really. But it was a very nice um, wholesome event at the Saban. Um, and I really felt so happy and proud to be a part of it. I almost wanted to join on and start teaching, I really did. I just, it felt so good. I was, and I was so impressed. I had no idea that some teachers had been there, what was the, I mean, fifty-five years aside. But the next rung was thirty, thirty-five. I, it's wonderful and that's really impressive because teaching has become very, very difficult. And I I don't care what anyone says, it is a tough, tough profession right now. And thirty-five years is just unbelievable. I also wanted to thank the Link crew at the high school. I think that is amazing. I think it's wonderful. I can't tell you how many, how much good feedback I've gotten. I think it's made the difference be between children coming from uh, eighth grade into ninth grade and being absolutely terrified and clueless to to really enjoying it and going to sleep that night saying, I can't wait to go back tomorrow. So whoever envisioned or led the Link crew, keep it happening. I like, it was great.
Thank you, and I I just wanna, I, you know, take this opportunity to, it it does take a a huge group of people to pull that off, uh, you know, the opening of school. And so and and I'm really appreciative of every cabinet member. Um, you know, we had, we'd asked teachers at the last minute to get some help with um, you know, some musical talent. And everybody said yes and everybody pulled together. Um, and it 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 is just, it takes so much to pull off something like that at the Saban Theater. Uh, but it it was truly a team collaborative effort.
Can I make one more statement? You set the bar very high for future open- opening days.
And we can do it.
All right.
We can do it.
Um, I I also um, would like to thank you. It would, the start of the school year is just been so positive and such a success already. Um, all of the things that my fellow board members said as well, uh, I I concur as well. I'd like to also highlight um, for Ken Haas and his M and O group, I've had so much positive feedback from Hawthorne parents and actually I heard from the mouth of a child, how um, how much better the school looks in the cafeteria area. And they really feel the difference from just the refresh that happened over the summer. And I know that that was a lot of work and it was a time crunch, but it was well worth it because we're receiving so much great feedback and it's really made an impact for the kids, most importantly. So I wa- I wanna give a shout out to them for making that happen and making it happen in time for school to open. I also wanna thank all of our staff and PTA, our incredible PTA, because all of those uh, the orientations and uh, the fairs on Sunday and 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 on Friday, our hardworking PTA has already just hit the ground running and we're so fortunate to have them. As well, I think they were part of putting in trees for and the sh- the, you know, addressing the shade at Horace Mann. So they just, they've been working all summer too. And uh, I must give a shout out to Michael LeBeau because he sponsored the middle school fair. And part of the reason that that zipper ride was there is because of Michael LeBeau. And he's so generous to our school district and we are so fortunate to have him. So I must say thank you to him as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Alex, you are up for student board member report.
I've been waiting for this all day. I'm really excited. Um, I have a treat for all of you because to make up for last time. Put audio, is it fine?
I wondered what was going on going on over there.
Yeah.
I see what you're doing.
Is it okay?
I like it.
Looks great.
Oh, okay. Um, so to make up for the last board meeting, I have two videos to show you today. Um, but first I wanna start by making a comment on um, um, the welcome back at the Saban. And I just wanted to say that it was such an honor to be able to speak and to open up the ceremony um, and thank so many of my teachers and um, it meant almost as much, if not more, to me than I hope it did to them. So thank you for that opportunity. Um, and then as promised, I have the Link crew video. Um, I don't really, I don't really think it does. I think it's like chain, like you buddies with like the freshmen, I guess. Okay. It lagged a little bit.
Cute.
And then the first day of school, of course, which was so much fun, I think especially for seniors, it's extra fun. Um, but yeah, these are just a couple of photos from there. Um, and then the back to school carnival at BV. Um, I happen to live near BV, so I could hear it from just walking around. Um, and I'm very happy that I got to go, um, because I did, in fact, take a video. Um, I think I missed the rest of the board though. I saw Ms. Marcus, but. My video from that.
Fantastic.
And it's gonna. And then the last thing that I just wanted to give an update on is all the amazing things happening here at the high school. In ASB, we have a bunch of spirit weeks. This week is a, it's called our WOW Week. So we have a bunch of things going on today and the rest of the week. And I'm also excited to start getting a close relationship with the ASB at BVMS and hopefully include them and their events by the next board meeting. And that's all.
Terrific. Thank you. Mrs. Marcus?
Thank you again for your great report. I really enjoy. I saw you at the carnival and I know you were taking pictures and I know that you've been around and you're gonna do an unbelievable job. And I would like to, I'm gonna save another comment for you in just a minute when I do my other report. But I just love the fact that you've stepped in and like without a heartbeat, without a skip of a beat. We are just like moving on just the way we did before and I really want to compliment you. And I hope it's a great year. I almost wanted to bring my two cookies with me today and get an ice cream sandwich and I thought about that. And I thought, well, I really wouldn't do it because I don't need it, but, but I really wanted to. And I was thinking, I would, they would take a picture of that, but I really wanted to come with my two cookies and they had WOW date. So that was, thank you again for that great report.
Alex, you're already making the student board member alumni very proud of just how you're doing with, you know, your report and how you've jumped in with both feet. I love it all. I love learning about that program. Call it the Link Program? Is that what it's called?
It's an orientation for, yeah.
Yeah, I, I love it. I remember the feeling of how scary it was coming to Beverly, straight from Hawthorne. Like, you know, we didn't, we didn't come from BV and it was just such a big jump. And just you could, you know, you could tell, like the energy in that, you know, room, you know, must have, must have felt great for the freshmen coming in. So letting them start on the right foot, I think is, is awesome. And did you say that Van Rossum and McDonald's kid is your best friend? Is that what you said that day?
She is my best friend and she's probably back there in the cave bathroom right now.
That is such a trip because I think I was, I think I had Ms. McDonald, her first year teaching and she was the best. And so now you're best friends as well. I was like.
And just to comment on the Link Crew thing, we all had to wear our Link Crew like tie dye shirts, those orange shirts, the bright shirts on the first day. So we had freshmen coming up to us and it was really great that we were able to help them. And they weren't like scared of us, like, oh no.
That's awesome. That's really great. Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. I don't have much more to add, but I really enjoyed it. As always, wonderful job. And thanks again for being an essential part of the start of the first week for freshmen.
Yes, thank you, Alex. I agree with what everybody has said. And I would say to any students out there watching, to watch Alex because she's following in Eli's footsteps. And this is such a great thing to do, student board member. So I encourage you all to watch carefully and to throw your hat in the ring.
Also, my quick thanks for really opening up just the best start to the school year with our opening day. I know that when I first asked you, it was a, you know, a lot of questions about, tell me what it looks like, what it's like. And I didn't give you a lot of information other than, you know, it's just a rush of experience to be able to stand up in front of six hundred people, many of them being your teachers. And, you know, and I said, you know, just whatever you think, like just heartfelt, you know, just welcome. And you did that all on your own. And that was the kickoff to what was really, you know, so well done and it felt so great. And you did that because you really had a heartfelt approach to how you articulated your thanks and your appreciation by calling out individual teachers. And I can tell you that staff members were talking about that all over the place after you had already left. People were still commenting on how they felt about your, your welcome. So thank you for that and thank you for your report tonight.
Fantastic. Next up, we have meeting reports from board members and I'll start with you, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, thank you. Since the last meeting, I've had occasion to attend two meetings. One was the Facilities and Construction Committee. They met the day after, I believe, our last meeting. They spent a great deal, they introduced Mr. Guzman to the committee. And also they spent a lot of time talking about, with Mr. Haas, about facilities and repairs and so on. They talked a little bit about the Conheim Building and building BH, the BHC Building that's under consideration. So they spent a great deal of time talking about that. And that was pretty much the consist of the meeting. The next meeting I went to was yesterday. I attended the Health and Safety Commission meeting. And I decided to do things a little differently this time. Instead of my making a comment to them about what's going on with us, I decided to introduce them to two of our student leaders, one of who happens to be sitting right on my right. And they got a chance to introduce themselves to the commission and the commission asked them questions. And I think that they, I think they enjoyed the experience and I think the commission enjoyed having them, a little bit of a change of pace. And I liked the feeling that I got that they were very, they. The rest of the meeting, they usually do it every month, they honor somebody who makes a difference. And yesterday, the person that they honored was Shirley Reitman. Every member of the commission gets to pick somebody every month of who makes a difference in the community. And Shirley Reitman was recommended by Dr. Hilborn. And his reason for it was that she had been so active in the program of Just in Case that's been going on. And she's practically running the southeast section of the Just in Case program over in her community. So they gave her the award for making a difference. And I thought that was really very nice. They also got complete reports from the Beverly Hills Police Department about what's going on and the Beverly Hills Fire Department. And then lastly, that I was, while I was still there, they got a full report on what the COVID and the monkeypox situation is in the United States, in the state and then in county and then in Beverly Hills. And of course, they had a presentation about the number of cases, what's going on and so on. So that pretty well wrap up my report for the last two meetings that I attended and I thank you.
As the newly designated board lays on to the BHF, I can tell you that a BHF meeting has been scheduled for next Monday. I, in my communications with the president of BHF, Faridotis, she, she mentioned that she wants an opportunity to talk to the board before the board lays on, joins for the first meeting, to make sure it's all kosher, I guess, or whatnot. So it's fine. I probably will not be attending the meeting on Monday until I'm formally invited to join, which I expect to be at the following meeting. But my conversations with Faridotis have been great so far and I'm looking forward to having sign a report. Not next week, next meeting, but probably the meeting after that. Thanks.
I usually attend the Human Relations Commission. They, as I mentioned last time, they are not doing meetings in August, so I don't have anything to report at this point.
Thank you. I also attended the Facilities and Construction Meeting with Mrs. Marcus and the Health and Safety Meeting yesterday. So I'm not gonna repeat that. And then I attended a meeting, two meetings actually, with Moss Adams. One was to do an update on the progress for the audit report that they're working on. And another, they did a presentation with Rafael and Fonder Solari to go over and review the previous audit reports that we had. In addition to that, on Thursday, August eighteenth, Dr. Bregy, myself and Noah, as well as staff, had an interview for the Executive Director of Construction and that was a second interview. So we're really excited about that. And the other item is, actually this was really fun. Dr. Bregy and I last Friday were interviewed by Josh Gross for the Beverly Hills View. And we had an opportunity to talk about the opening of school and our new direction. And that was really wonderful and you can probably see that on, on the city website. Thank you very much. And that's all I have to report. And now I need to find my place on my agenda. Okay, next up on our agenda is Personnel Services Memorandum of Understanding Between Beverly Hills Unified School District and the California School Employees Association. And it's Beverly Hills Chapter Number Three Two Eight, Juneteenth Holiday.
Thanks, President Wells, board members. We have what you have before you.
Do we need to make a motion first?
Are we approving this? Okay. Sorry. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Go ahead.
No worries. This is just a memorandum of understanding with CSEA Chapter Three Twenty Eight, recognizing formally the Juneteenth holiday while we've had side agreements regarding the Juneteenth holiday. This formalizes things and will actually be put into their collective bargaining agreement. Always nice to do, work with our labor partners in the negotiation process. And we will have similar MOUs coming forward with our instructional assistants, as I see Carol out there, as well as our OTBS unit. So those will come formal, be formalized at future meetings as well.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I just want to just point out for the community, I guess, just make sure we understand. So the holiday became official in the middle of last year. So my reading of the MOU is that we are, we are giving these staff members a holiday for them to take at any point in this school year to make up for the missed holiday last year.
That's correct. So this year will be a floating holiday. We actually had one last year as well as in that side agreement. And then next year, what we are doing here, formalizing, is to say that on June nineteenth, we'll actually be off that day. So it'll be treated as a holiday. And in this agreement, if it falls on a Sunday, it'll be recognized on Monday. If it falls on Saturday, it'll be recognized on Friday, like other holidays.
Yeah, like all the rest of the national holidays.
That's correct.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm happy that we are acknowledging Juneteenth and along with the federal holiday. So I'm happy to see this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden.
President Wells will make a motion to approve the ratification of an agreement with William Scotsman to extend the lease for three modular buildings at Arodeo.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. So on, on this agenda item, and I think it's the next two, I note that we're, we're paying the same rate that we paid originally for these modular buildings. We're just extending them for a year, paying the same rate. I'm just wondering if we try to get perhaps a discounted rate because they're a year older and they've already been installed and like have, I, you may not know this, Rafael, but I'm just wondering if we try to get a deal here.
So, so the rate remained the same, as you mentioned. I think we, whenever we do requests for an extension, we ask for that information as well. Sometimes you'll see actually an increase for items, for rates. In this case, they agreed to keep the rate consistent for, for all of these. So.
And as we discuss, so I'm, I believe that these amounts come out of bond funds, correct?
Yes.
So, and, and these were not, these are part of the discretionary bond funds. We know that we're at a budget shortfall with the bond funds. These are further coming out of the bond funds. We had not planned, I do not believe, to, to pay these. So I guess I'm just reiterating what I asked for in the study session for the, you know, community that was in televised that we really need to get ahead of how much we have left in the bond funds, how much work there's left to do and set a strategy for how we're gonna, you know, tackle the rest of construction that we have ahead of us. It's just a good reminder that the balance that we have is diminishing. So.
Yes, definitely. We are hard at work in regards to getting the schedule as well as budget information. As you know, within any transition, it does take some time for us to be able to gather information and data. And I just want to commend our Fonder Solari team because of all of the hard work that they're doing. They're doing amazing work, just gathering information, getting us up to speed. So they, they're working on that. We should have it to you very shortly, within the next couple of months, as we mentioned in the study session. And with that said, we'll be able to incorporate all of these costs into that.
Thank you, Rafael. I have no doubt, and thank you to our Fonder Solari team for also being here tonight. I, I'm, I'm very open to giving them the time for them to wrap their hands around everything that's going on. But I really do look forward to getting in a, in a room soon for a future study session for us to really, at least in broad strokes, start really setting the path forward here. Thank you, Rafael.
Right. One comment that I would make is that B and C for the portables, it looks to me like they're for facilities and maintenance and operations. And so I think regardless of where we're going, construction wise, we're going to have those in place because we don't have a plan right now for facilities and maintenance other than in these portables. So this is, you know, the, the situation would be the same regardless right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I would suggest, well, actually let's call for the vote.
We can tie all three together.
Right, I was gonna suggest. Can we make an amendment to tie the approval of A, B, and C together?
Sure. I made the motion. I would agree with the tying A, B, and C together. Who made the second?
Who made the second? Did I?
Dr. Stern.
Is that okay with you, Amanda?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden.
I'll make a motion.
Mm-hmm.
For the approval of Amendment Number Two to the agreement with ARB for services related to the water line break at the former Vennacles facility on the Beverly Hills High School site.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Mr. Halimi. Any discussion?
I just wonder if there was any further breakdown of the twenty thousand dollars. I understand it's a very small amount, given that the original agreement was six point two million. But I was curious, I just saw a total, if we're aware of, if there was any breakdown or not for that amount.
So the proposed amount for twenty thousand is, is what we received as far as their estimate. So as we get their final invoices, we'll be able to see the exact amount of what that would be. But it is in that range.
Oh, I see. It's actually in the attachment. I hadn't seen it before. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
I, I have a question about that. That this twenty thousand dollars is required because we're gonna demobilize and then remobilize.
Yes.
Was there no way that that could have been avoided so that we wouldn't have to spend that twenty thousand dollars?
At this point in time, there wasn't. What happened is there's some construction that has to be done together simultaneously because if not, it creates a sort of a hazardous situation in regards to the removal of concrete as well as the retaining wall situation that we have. So we have to kind of coordinate both of those projects at the same time. One of those, we have to go out and go through the procurement process as well. So that's, that's the situation that we're in. So in order for us to do this the best and the safest way, the removal of the concrete as well as the retaining wall work that we have to do, it's the best way for us to move forward. If we were to just keep everything, it would cost a lot more. So this is just the easiest and most cost efficient way to get this done.
Thank you.
And are these twenty thousand dollars, is this coming out of the bond funds? I'd assume that it is.
Yes.
If there's no further questions, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. The next item on the agenda is board policies. May I have an approval for, actually, I would like to make a recommendation that we waive the first reading and approve the board policy thirteen thirteen Civility and Exhibit thirteen thirteen dash E one Civility, BHUSD Community Pledge.
I'd agree and I don't know if you're making the motion, but I'll make the motion. So moved.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Well, first I just would like to say this civility policy is a board bylaw that now further discusses the civility expectations that we as a district have for each other. I'm happy to read the civility bylaw. Actually, would like to read that. So I think I printed it. Out in one second. Oh, great. So I'd, actually, I'd just like to read it. The Governing Board recognizes the impact that civility. Um, "The Governing Board Recognizes the Impact That Civility Has on the Effective Operation of the District, Including Its Role Creating a Safe and Positive School Environment and Enabling a Focus on Student Well-Being, Learning, and Achievement. The Board Believes That Each Person Should Be Treated with Dignity and Respect in Their Interactions Within the School Community. The Board Understands That the First Amendment Provides Strong Protection for Speech. However, the Board Expect that All Speech and Expression Will Comport With Norms of Civil Behavior on District Grounds, in District Facilities, During District Activities or Events, and in the Use of District Electronic Digital Systems and Platforms. Civil Behavior is Polite, Courteous, and Reasonable Behavior Which Is Respectful to Others and Includes Integrity, Honesty, Acceptance, Timeliness, Dependability, Observance of Laws and Rules, and Effective Communication. The Board and the District Staff Shall Model Civil Behavior as an Example of Behavior that is Expected Throughout the District. Practices that Promote Civil Behavior Include Actively Listening, Giving Full Attention to the Speaker, and Refraining from Interruptions. Welcoming and Encouraging Participation, Input and Feedback Through Stakeholder Engagement, Promptly Responding to Concerns, and Embracing Bearing and Diverse Viewpoints. Such Practices May Be Incorporated Into Governance Standards and Our Community Pledge, Adopted by the Board and Superintendent and/or Professional Standards or Codes of Conduct for Employees as Specified in District Policies and Regulations. Staff, Students, Parents, Guardians, and Community Members Should be Educated in the Recognition, Development, and Demonstration of Civil Behavior. The Superintendent or Designee May Incorporate Related Concepts in the Curriculum, Provide Staff Development Activities, and/or Communicate This Policy to the School Community. Students, Staff, Parents, Guardians, and the Community Members Shall Not Communicate or Behave in a Manner That Causes Disruption, Hinders the Orderly Conduct of District Operations, the Educational Program, or Any Other District Program or Activity, or Creates an Unsafe Learning or Working Environment. The Superintendent or Designee May Respond to Disruptive Violent or Threatening Behavior in accordance with the Law and as specified in Board Policy Administrative Regulation Three Five One Five Point Two Disruptions. Behavior by Students or Staff That is Discriminatory, Harassing, or Intimidating, including Sexual Harassment, Bullying, and/or Hate Violence, or Behavior That is in Any Way Unlawful, is Prohibited and is Subject to Discipline in accordance with the Law and as specified in District Policies and Regulations. In addition to this, we have Board Policy Three Five, I mean, One Three One Three, which is an exhibit, which is our community pledge that we just adopted and signed. Does anyone have any comments? Terrific. I think this is a perfect complement to our community pledge. And we've never had a civility bylaw in our board policies. And I think the timing is perfect. So.
Can I say one thing?
Go ahead.
I, I, I'm very proud that we're doing this. Um, what I said outside when we were signing, and I'll kind of just echo again in here. I think this is, a lot of this is about accountability. And I really encourage our community. We have to start holding each other accountable and start having the kind of example, you know, through our actions, having the kind of behavior that we would like to see our children have. And, uh, I think that starts with us at the board level, with the, uh, administration, you know, cabinet, and, you know, all the way through, through our parents, teachers, and all community members. Um, so I, I, I would love to see everyone in our community sign this community pledge. I would love to see us have the kind of event that we had today every year at the kickoff of the, you know, school year to remind ourselves and, and set the right tone for how we want to conduct ourselves. Um, but it, it, you know, these are words on a paper until there's actual action. And, you know, the first time that we, you know, see behavior, uh, that is not, uh, in accordance or not consistent with the kind of pledge that we have here, um, wh- what are we gonna do about it? Are we gonna ignore it? Are we gonna turn the other way? Or, um, are we gonna, are we gonna try to, you know, correct that behavior in the right way? And show forgiveness was a word that, um, Ms. Wells used earlier that I really liked. Um, you know, show forgiveness and try to move forward in a positive way. Um, here on out, these were, these are words on a page, but now it's about the actions as soon as we walk out of this room.
I agree. Thank you. I think, uh, another thing to be said is that we have programs, we had the P B I S program in all of our schools. And one of the things that prompted the community pledge and as well the civility bylaw is that although we expect this of our students, we don't have a community-wide policy and pledge that starts with the board and goes all the way throughout the community. So I think this is, uh, just the wraparound that we needed, and I think it, um, will work really well with our PBS program. With that said, I will call for a roll call vote. At, as student board member Alex Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Doctor Stern?
Yes.
And I am a yes. The motion passes four zero with the preferential vote from Alex Baden. I'm really happy about this. Thank you all.
Uh, President Wells, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the governance handbook.
I will second the motion.
Motion was made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Anyone want to start?
Yeah, I just want to note, um, for anyone that's following along in the community that there's two attachments, uh, to this item. Uh, the one that I believe that we are voting on, I just want to be clear. If you open it up, it's the one that actually reads Beverly Hills Unified School District Governance Handbook, not the one that's the B H U S D. The only differences are really formatting, but I just want to be clear with what we're approving tonight. And I want to thank, uh, the board, um, specifically, I believe it was Ms. Wells and Ms. Marcus and Eli, who's, uh, who's not on the board anymore, but is having a wonderful college career, um, for, uh, their, you know, first read of this and making the initial comments. And then we met as a board and with the administra- and, oh, and, and Dr. Bregy, I didn't mean to leave him.
It's okay.
Uh, off. Um, and then we came together as a board. We, you know, batted a number of things around this. And, and this was really part of the whole strategic planning process, uh, for the year. Um, I also want to thank, uh, my, my colleague, Dr. Stern, for all the work that she did on this document as well. It was a lot. And then I took a turn in it. We all, we all had our hands on this document. Uh, but I'm proud of it, and it's something that I think we, we should revisit, uh, every year or every other year or whatever it is. But we got ahead of a lot of policies, a lot of handbooks. So we, we did a lot this summer. Um, and, um, I'm really proud of the work that, uh, that we got to do. And this is, uh, another example of that. And, um, so I'm really happy. Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
I'd just like to make a comment about the fact that having been on the original one that we did, that we actually started to revise, this is like a, really a streamlined version of it that makes it much more easily to accept for people coming on the board, that it's, uh, easier, it's more organized, and there's not a lot of redundancy in it, which there was in the other one. And I think that it's gonna be, uh, very well accepted by new members to the board when they're elected. And I'd like to thank everybody that was on the committee and, and everybody that was a part of it. Because even though Mrs. Wells and I were sort of struggling with it in the beginning, everybody had a part of putting this together. And it's just not, should be noted that it's a, a, a community effort by our part. And so, um, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that this, we do look at this and we do follow it.
Can I say one more thing? We, we sitting here stand on the shoulders of giants, right? And what I mean by that is like, there's work that goes on, on previous boards and previous administrations, and we keep building and getting better and better, right? That is a culture of excellence. So when we sit here and say that we're proud of what we've done, it's not that what came before us is bad by any means. It just means that every board is gonna take some time with it and continue to craft it in such a way that it makes sense for the school district going forward. So I hope this is revised next year, the year after that, if it's, you know, if the board deems that it's, you know, but necessary to, uh, but do so. And so I'm, I'm just proud of the work that we got to do. I think we've streamlined a lot of things. And, um, so I, I, but that's by no means that this is perfection and that, you know, we can't, uh, address this again. We absolutely should.
Doctor Stern?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
All right. Um, well, I would like to thank all of my colleagues and Dr. Bregy and the cabinet for all the work that we did this summer. I know when I first brought this up, that it seemed like it was rather aggressive. Um, all of the things I, I put forth from, you know, the mission and vision and our strategic plan, uh, redoing the board policies. Our board policies had not been updated since two thousand and nine. Um, and then taking a look at the governance handbook, this is really the final piece of all of the work that we did that really is to improve our governance as a board. And I think, uh, we've all recognized that we are a better board when we can approve the structures that, that we govern with. And I think that we're in such a strong place to move forward this year and, and in the future. And as well, I agree with Gabe. This is, uh, you know, fine tuning what we had before, looking at it with fresh eyes. And it's fully expected that this would be looked at again next year and that we always continue now and stay on top of this, from our board policies to our handbook, to our strategic plan, that we put these, um, structures in place so that it's more streamlined and more, um, you know, it's calendared every year. We have board planning sessions. We have when we, uh, will be meeting to review the strategic plan mid-year. We have put all these things on our calendar, and I think that these processes are gonna make us a better board, a better governing team, um, and a better district. So I just, I just thank all of you. I, again, I just think we're a great team. And we got so much accomplished, and I feel really good about it. So thank you. If there's no other comments, I'll call for the vote. Uh, student board member Alex Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Doctor Stern?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. This passes four zero with a preferential vote from student board member Alex Baden.
We're on public comment, I think.
Thank you. We have no public comment this evening, so that takes us to, uh, board comments.
I just want to start by thinking, oh, I just want to start by thanking, um, every single student, faculty, and community leader that came, um, to the community pledge today. And, um, it was just incredible to see everyone there. And then just something for the future, I'm really looking forward to, um, being present at more of the campuses, um, starting very soon and in the city with, um, being at the Health and Safety Commission was something that I hope to continue to do, be present in the city and around the schools. So I'm excited for the rest of the year.
Well, I just once again want to congratulate everybody on the beginning of the school year. It was a great, great, good, wonderful. It seemed like with all the work that went on, it was so well worth it. And I, it, I am so pleased to be, be able to be part of this community. And this, tonight was really wonderful. And I, to see that audience out there and to join in and be a part of it made me feel really great. And I think, I'm hoping that our community will embrace this community pledge and think about it for the next, not just the next year, but for the year after that and so on. But to, to, to put so much into that and to get, hopefully, that it will really be something that will make people really be more civil, think with responsibility and integrity. And I'm very, very hopeful that it will be something wonderful going forward.
I agree with all the comments made by my colleagues. I also just wanted to do another thank you. This is the one area that I think it's okay to be repetitive. Thank you, Dr. Bregy. Thank you, the administration, cabinet, really everyone for the start of the school year. It doesn't just happen. Um, you guys put in the time as well as, you know, a, a lot of work that we did over the summer as well, uh, with work that's still continuing with the strategic plan. Uh, special shout out to Ms. Starkins. Thank you for everything you did with the event and the branding that I've been seeing with some of the new, uh, construction photos and the friends of Founder Solari left, but I know that they were part of that too. So thank you.
Of course, we all want to thank Ms. Mary Wells as, as well. She absolutely, um, was the big cheerleader for this whole thing. Did a tremendous job, held, carried it off with great poise and did us proud. And thank you for all your, your extra efforts and time on this. Um, I wanted to say too, that regarding civility, I want people to remember that in this day and age, often uncivil behavior occurs on screens. So it occurs on posts and nasty texts or chat rooms. And just so you know, we are on to you. If that is something that you do, this applies to you. And we are looking for the entire community to also, um, take responsibility for their behavior, uh, at times uncivil behavior, um, that they may do, um, with social media. So it also applies. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor Stern. Um, I just want to say, thank you Rebecca for pulling this off today. I know we, you know, as a district, there's one thing I learned when I got on the board. It, it's going fast and it never slows down. It's just constant. And to wait for a moment to slow down, you'd be waiting forever and the moment would be gone. So thank you for making this happen with all that we had to do with opening school. For you to, um, create this event, I've just really, I'm indebted to you for that. And thank you, and for you, Dr. Bregy, and all of cabinet and everybody that showed up. It was fantastic. Um, I would just like to say, use the pledge. And if that becomes a tagline, I would, I think it could be catchy. Um, so when moments come up, just say, use the pledge. Um, uh, on a separate note, and, and in some ways this sets the tone, we're about, we, a lot of the, um, candidates are launching their campaigns for school board. And so as we, uh, begin the campaign season for school board member, um, I think that the pledge is a perfect time to set the tone for the campaign. And I, I encourage everybody to keep that in mind when we're talking about the campaign and we're talking about candidates. I was at Faridotis's opening, uh, week, or her Sunday opening last Sunday. And this Sunday, um, Mrs. Marcus is having hers, as well as Mahal Amir Salkin and Judy Manatary. And I encourage everybody to go to these, um, campaign launches, go to the coffees, meet our candidates, and get to know them so that you can make informed decisions. And to keep in mind the community pledge during this campaign season. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. And, and I just want to point out too, that, you know, the, you know, I love to use the pledge. And, um, you know, this is something that, um, is not a, a, a one event, um, initiative. This is, um, you know, the only way that this works is if it becomes part of our culture. And that's hard to do. Um, but this is the community to do this in, and we have the right people to do this. Um, and so you'll see this, uh, just, you know, at, uh, large events. Um, you know, whether it's a sporting event, I was talking to Mr. Ellis about, um, you know, even between some of our, uh, our rival matches against, uh, Santa Monica, Malibu, that this would be, uh, something that would be great, that, you know, a, a student could read, uh, before the game starts. Um, because it really does, uh, involve everyone, um, and it applies to everyone. And that's the beauty behind the words is that everyone in our school community, um, this impacts. And so, and it takes everybody to do that. So, um, you know, I just want everyone to know. We'll, we'll work this into, um, events. I know that, uh, we will be working with our staff as well to look for those, uh, innovative ways to connect with students so that students are aware of, uh, the pledge and the words, what they mean. Um, and it does fit nicely into our P B I S curriculum. So I know it's something that our students can grasp quite easily. So, um, so just congratulations to everyone. Uh, thank you to our Board of Education for being part of opening day. It was a long, long day, a long opening. Um, but as I mentioned, it's the first time I've ever had, um, our Board of Education, um, in a hundred percent attendance, um, and stayed throughout, uh, the event. So I want to thank you for that because that's part of our really good kickoff, is having our Board of Education there. Um, and also just a, just a quick special thank you to our Hawthorne Elementary School teachers. Um, you know, we talk a lot about what happens behind the scenes. Um, you know, with a lot of work that was being done at Hawthorne this summer, our Hawthorne teachers were, uh, not able to get back into classrooms early. And so, uh, we asked them to, um, uh, make miracles happen. Um, and walking through the Hawthorne classes on the first day and seeing how teachers were set up was beyond amazing what they did. And for some of our teachers, in just a day or two, um, that was just, uh, they were miracle workers. And if you're a student at Hawthorne, you would have never known what would hap- just days before. And if you're a student at Hawthorne, you would have never known what would happen just days before. The work that was, uh, being done, uh, the, the equipment that wasn't being moved, y- y- you wouldn't know it if you're a student, and that only happened because of the dedication of our teachers to prepare that space so that students wouldn't realize when they walked in that first day. So special thank you to our Hawthorne elementary teachers.
Well, they loved it. Um, well, if there's no other comments, then I am going to officially adjourn our meeting. It is 7:16. Thank you, everybody, for a great board meeting and a great launch of our community pledge. Good night, everyone.